Yeah, mine works.
Gentlemen, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We had an air microphone. Thank you.
Neither.
It's probably just the charger. Okay, well, tonight we are going to be talking about continuing the discussion of speed limit reductions and traffic calming methods. And just to remind everyone, we had at a committee, the whole meeting in April. I'll be at 90 minute, but seemed very brief touch on this topic before. And is our intent tonight to get a little bit deeper into some of these topics and we have some additional great information that I have shared with you as well, some additional things that we're going to be talking about. Hopefully, if we have some time and by no stretch of the imagination is this the we're going to be having a series of these meetings coming, coming down the pike here, folks, because this is a very, very deep and very serious topic for us to consider. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and make sure. Let's see what we got here. Let's see if I can get my slideshow going here. So is everybody able to see that? Larry and John? Okay, excellent. So I wanted to get started here. I'm going to do a couple of little reviews of some of the things we covered in April, because I know there's some members of the public that were not in attendance at that time that are here and also might be listening in or reviewing the recording in the future. Just a reminder, when we talked about this in April, the goals for our discussions at that time and continuing forward were are to find ways to increase pedestrian and bicycle safety, encourage multimodal activities, reduce cut through traffic and maximize scarce resources. Another thing that I thought was really important for us to review quickly is the street designations, because that has a direct impact on whatever path we have to take relative to changing or modifying anything related to those the various roads. And so one of the things I would call to everyone's attention is you can see at the bottom of the screen, and again, this is not inclusive. I was trying to fit this on a slide, so I apologize for the corners being cut off. But it gives the illustrates the fundamentals here. The red is our two state highways, 522 and 104. And the ultimate decision about speed limits and traffic calming resides with the State Secretary of Transportation. Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. We'll switch your microphones here, folks. And then you'll feel take a look here at the green in the photo is we have only two arterials within our designated arterials within our community. One is Northeast 178th Street, which comes down from Shoreline, down from 35th and connects down to SR 104, as well as 40th place that heads out towards the edges of our community by Mountain Lake Terrace. The purple that you'll notice there are considered major collectors. So just make a mental note here that the red and the green are the things that we have to work through the State Department of Transportation for. And the actually, let me back up a second. The red, we have to work through the State Department of Transportation through. And we're going to go down a less level of orderiness in terms of things that we have to do to make any changes on these routes. Then the green requires, as an arterial requires a a study. We'll talk a little bit more about that. We've talked about methodologies for setting speed limits and traffic calming. And then when it gets to the purples or the grays here, which are the purples are the are the collectors. Those are have far more local control and is within our purview to consider the changes to those in conjunction with emergency services and other agencies that would be impacted. Again, Senate Bill 5687 went into effect in June. And I mentioned this to you guys before in April. And again, this basically removes a few barriers to local jurisdictions in terms of giving us the ability to set our speed limits on local roads. So whenever local authorities in their respective jurisdictions determine on the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation that the maximum speed permitted, I will cite the RCWs, is greater or less than is reasonable and safe under the conditions found to exist upon a highway or part of a highway, the local authority may determine and declare a reasonable and safe maximum limit thereon, which so
Question.
Yes, I know what you're gonna ask probably.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So those are the state highways. That's what that pertains to.
This this pertains to all roads. But it again, it's varying degrees. So at the lowest level of responsibility, I mean, of effort to change speed limits is at a residential road level. And the state calls them, all roads are called highways, basically. So that that and the other thing that's important to recognize that engineering traffic investigation under Senate Bill 58, 5687 is is not specifically what we used to think of as engineering or traffic engineering study. Just quickly, and we'll come back to this in a second. This is a great point to make. Consumer casover. It allows for decreases to speed limits, but not less than 20 miles per hour. Allows local authorities in the respective jurisdictions, they may establish maximum speed limit of 20 miles per hour on a non arterial highway or part of a non arterial highway. So again, that's without doing a specific engineering study. Or going through the State Department of Transportation. And it allows for decrease decreases to speed limits at intersections. That one is pique my interest and I don't, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure of examples of that that I could cite for you around the city, but I certainly can think of places that would, I mean, not around the city, around the state. But I hopefully can find it some examples of that. And then also, under the state law, speed limits can be reduced at intersections and by vehicle type. It is possible to reduce speed limits specifically for heavy vehicles, et cetera. So here's the caveat to that engineering question. A speed limit established under the subsection by a city or town local authority does not need to be determined on the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation if the city or town local authority has developed procedures regarding establishing a maximum speed limit under this subsection. So that's again, what we're really going to be focusing in on an initial step. So that we have local control with our community over some changes. Here we are. There here's another caveat. Any alteration of the maximum limits on state highways within incorporated cities or towns by local authorities shall not be effective until such alteration has been approved by the Secretary of Transportation. That's 104 and 522. Current speed limits, we've talked about this before. I'm not going to belabor the point. I think most people are aware of kind of the hodgepodge of speed limits we have because of the various annexations. Just calling out again, 522 was reduced by the council in 2013 from 45 to 40. Again, arterials generally, we only have, we have two, basically. And again, there are some outliers when it comes to these things because of the annexations and that is listed here too. Residential, yeah.
Thank you, Tom. A question or a comment I want to make is the the traffic on Boffo, I'm sorry. The traffic on Boffo Way went up about 30, 35% when tolling started at 520. And so as I recall, the speed limit was dropped from 45 to 40 as part of that mitigation perhaps of that impact. But really, everyone goes 50. So in or more. So I just want to say that we have both the increased traffic and you know, if if you happen to go the speed limit, your tailgate as someone who drives on Boffo Way almost every day. Yes. So so I just wanted to make that connection to the tolling of 520 and the and when the decrease of the speed limit occurred.
So again, just quick thought to that because of the annexation, there are a couple of holdovers in terms of speed limits, including some kind of signs that are a little bit recommended speed signs that are actually not their former county from county annexations. So here, here's another thing I wanted to revisit very quickly. I'm gonna get this out of the way so I can see. There we go. Seattle did their reduced speed program as well as they did test programs in 2016 and they reduced their speed limits to 25 miles per hour on most major roads. So 415 miles is a lot. It also reduced speed limits to 20 miles an hour on most residential streets and here we go. This is interesting, and this is not an outlier. There's other data that shows us from around the country. It says the data showed that lowering the speed limits and increasing sign density alone, without any marketing campaigns, additional enforcement, retime signals or engineering changes to the street resulted in lower speeds and fewer crashes. There was a 20 to 40% drop in the number of crashes in locations with a new 25 mile an hour speeds. There's also a study out there that was on the blog of Saddle S dot about a couple of intersections where they reduced the speed limits in in conjunction with some other efforts and the results were astonishing. It's like more than 50% drop in in serious, serious accidents. This is the one that we've all seen this over the years and various permutations, but it really there's another one now that shows 15 miles an hour and it says almost everyone would survive an impact of being hit by a car at 15 miles an hour if they're pedestrian cyclists. And then it goes down very, very dramatically to from there. And I just wanted to call that out again, the 15 mile an hour one is not one that is in our portfolio, if you will, because the state doesn't allow us to do that, which actually flies in the face, unfortunately, of both the federal guidelines now and the National Association of City Transportation Engineers and some of their materials we'll get to in a minute. So here, here's, here's the meat of kind of the homework that you guys were looking at here. The National Association of City Transportation Officials. This, the document City Limits. I mentioned this to Minister Hill and Vice Chair Casover earlier today. This document actually is kind of a successor to the document that Councilor Casover and I mentioned in conjunction with Shoreline resetting their speed limits. Shoreline's methodology was basically created in 2017. This was created just a couple of years ago and it it really steps away from the 85th percentile thinking and into more a softer science kind of approach to this and takes into consideration these factors and the and these three, I shouldn't say factors, these three methods are the key ones. Not only NACTO has been encouraging this, but the federal government has also been encouraging this for a number of years. Number one, setting default speed limits on many streets at once, such as 25 miles an hour on all major streets and 20 miles per hour on all minor streets. Sound familiar? That's what Seattle did. Designating slow zones and sensitive areas that includes parks, schools. I'm trying to think what the other ones are congested areas and there's ways that you can take a look at, if you look at the some of the flow charts they have in the back of the document show where there are high potential for high conflicts and high impact. Not impacts, high interactions, excuse me. And then the third one is setting quarter speed limits on high priority major streets using a safe speed study. Basically, this methodology that's in here, which uses conflict density and activity level to set context appropriate speed limits. And let that one hang for a second. I mean, the the context appropriate, I think, is what we have been struggling with as a community as the region and our community has grown and we just haven't had the tools or the legal authority for that matter to do that. Please, Councilor Bodie.
Yes, I'd like to raise some context kind of questions or issues that I see that I'd like to make sure we address. First of all, if you look at Lake City Way, the which just, you know, joins us. The main speed limit is 35, but through the congested or the more commercial area, it's 30. And so we don't have similar kind of provision. We're also going to have bus rapid transit before we know it. And we know where those congested intersections are going to be. They're where the stops are going to be. And so and I'd say 165th and Town Center are already sensitive areas where I see near misses on occasion already. So I just wanted to flag the connection to sound transit. And then last but not least, I'll just simply point out that groups of bicyclists sometimes go much faster than 15 miles an hour on Perk Kilman. And because it's heavily used by pedestrians and strollers and so forth in our neighborhood, in our city within the city limits. It is a safety speed limit issue by itself. And even where there are stop signs, often the cyclists don't stop at the stop signs. They kind of roll on through. So just wanted, I don't know that that's within our scope, but I just wanted to note it in case there's a way to to fold that in. Because I know there have been some serious collisions with bicycles where people have been injured in the past. So anyway. Three, three points of context.
You bet. Vice Chair Casover.
Yes, and another context issue that I think we need to make sure we include as we discuss Boffo Way is the fact there are driveways that enter into it and one of the I don't know, one of the factors that you take into account when you look at speed limits are driveways and how frequent, you know, how how close to each other they are, how many of them there are in a particular stretch. So that's something we need to pay attention to. The other thing, as I read this material, well, there are two things. And I don't know how far are you through or we went into discussion yet or
Not yet.
Why don't we, why don't we get you through?
Okay.
And then, you know, I have several thoughts. I've spent a long time reading this and I really would like to to get after it.
Thank you. Yes. And we we have, yeah, we'll bookmark that context and a bunch of other things too here. And just on point, Councilor Bodie, the the Burkeham Trail speed limit issue is sort of like the sign ordinance. It's one that none of us really want to talk about anymore, but but it's it's a necessary thing. Fortunately, with the side ordinance ordinance, now it's 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 not a, we've all had therapy and we're fine. The Burkeham Trail is a little different, you know, and but I'm, I'm completely with you. I know a number of years ago, there was a really near tragedy at 165th with a cyclist and a little child. And it was still stunning to me. The number of cyclists, even when officers were standing there, went right, right in front of them. I mean, unbelievable. And they do it at the lights too. So it's the the compliance rate, if I recall correctly, at 170th and Ballenger Way and the Burke is something like 4%. So it's tells you that there's an issue. This really quickly is just an anecdote for from Minneapolis and I and I think I'd rather spend a lot of time having our conversation than going through this, but really what I'm trying to illustrate here is it works lowering the speed limits and and taking look at the system, a systemic approach to finding ways to encourage people and discourage them from speeding opportunity, which is something I know Councilor Casover would like to talk about too. This one is is really sobering. 2010 to 2019, most Washingtonian killed while walking or biking, 87% died on roads with a posted speed 30 miles an hour, miles per hour or higher. So to give Washington a lot of credit, 2019, they came out with some recommendations and and tag team on the federal government. And then NACTO was doing their work and and has carried it on. So I think there's a lot of alignment amongst the agencies about what is necessary. And the common theme is speed kills end of story. And below 30 miles an hour, people's chances of survival go up dramatically, whether you're on a bike, electric bike, as Mr. Frattoni was today, or a, you know, skateboard or unicycle, whatever. Okay, so we'll just leave these quotes out of here, but these are, this is from NTSB. And so I just wanted to highlight that the federal government as well is really concerned about record numbers of unfortunate interactions between cars, pedestrians and multimodal. And so similarly, the NTSB recommendations are again, accounting for all users, not just for people in cars. That's a huge shift from just 2013, most of their data, most of their recommendations were not so considered, in my opinion. Amending state laws to allow cities to use automated speed enforcement, which we do for our school zones. It is of note that the State Department of Transportation made the same recommendation to the legislature to to open up speed cameras in more areas and they declined to do it. It was in one of the bills and it got pulled. With the exception of, again, the one city that gets to have speed cameras in certain places and guess where that is? Olympia. And then setting performance measures at the federal, state and local level to track where speeding occurs. What measures are most effective at curbing it and where progress is being made? So here's what, here's where the conversation really starts. Fundamentally, anything we do, whether it's looking at lowering speed limits on residential roads, lowering speed limits on collectors, lowering speed limits on 522 or 104 or arterials. We need to figure out what kind of methodology we're going to use because it gives us saves us a lot of money from an engineering standpoint. And I thank the legislature for making this less onerous than it was before, previous to June 2nd, I think the actual Senate bill went into effect. Some of the changes and the authority granted to municipalities was limited to near schools, town centers, or very specific prescribed areas. And that has been removed. So it's now municipality has the authority to do it wider. So I'll stop right there. Residential streets, again, we have, if you think about this in in four tiers, we have the state routes, we have arterials, we have basically collectors, and then we have residential streets. The collectors and residential streets are ostensibly some nuances a little bit different. Your microphone is burning up there. Yes, please.
Okay, all right. I turned it off, but there we go. So thank you very much for giving, giving us access to this NACTO City Limits document, because what I found when I read it was that it affirmed sort of common sense ideas that I had in my own mind, but that I had no, no data to support. So I was really glad to read this. I've always found the 85th percentile strategy to be misguided. Why on earth would we set speed limits based on people who are drive too fast? I mean, just as crazy to me. So and then the other thing that it made really clear and that has happened is that there's a change in philosophy at the federal level and at the state level, and I hope that we adopt it here in Lake Forest Park. And that is that it's not about the cars, it's about the community and everybody in the community who uses streets and that the purpose of a street is not just to get cars as fast as possible from A to B, it is to serve the whole community. So that that is really where I'm coming from with this. And I just was so glad to to read this and see that others out there are adopting this new change in philosophy. So the other things that caught my eye when I read through this. And I want to go back to some things that Councilmember Bodie brought up, particularly about the 522. Is that there's this concept called speeding opportunity, which means that people are more inclined to speed because of the design of the road. And I think we have that problem in a few places in Lake Forest Park. I think we have it on 178th Street. I think we have it particularly on 522, south of the towns, well, south of 100 south of Bookside, basically, just just all through there. And so as we discuss this and think about it and and have our conversations with those, the and also we have it on 104 from the the beginning of Lake Forest Park down basically to 40th place. Just that whole, well, well, it sort of peters out of it, but particularly on the western edge of the city. Yes, people are are sort of encouraged to go faster than I think is really necessary. So anyway, so that that's my my initial contribution to our conversation and I hope that we just take this very seriously, this document. I think it's a really excellent piece of work and I hope we implement it.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's real.
Thank you. Just a second, that last topic. The the more predictable a street is, the more people are likely to take risks. And so especially when we move into our residential streets, you know, then it becomes a cycle. Kids don't want to play in the street because cars are going too fast. Cars go too fast because they know kids aren't on the street and it kind of is this reinforcing cycle. And so creating intentional unpredictability that alerts a driver, something's happening here and then they start paying attention. And then they slow down and it's really interesting. Once they start actually paying attention what they're doing rather than just, you know, driving in their zombie land, which we all tend to try to do when everything is predictable. So actually Sally Yamazaki lent me these books a while back, but we didn't have an opportunity to use them, but it talks a lot about that. How do you make streets less predictable in a safe way that encourages cars to just slow down because they have to now pay attention, right? Really good for residential streets, maybe collectors, maybe, maybe some arterial work. I was thinking, what if we had art in the street? You know, that was maybe temporary and replaced often, but then people have something unique that they're now I have to pay attention, right? Something's different about this street. And then the other pieces with the bikes running, running stop signs. We do have a law that allows that now. Not at a stop light, but at a stop sign that they're allowed to do a roll through and treat it as a yield as long as obviously there is no traffic moving through. And I think educating people around that and maybe we have bikes can yield signs on those stop signs so that the cars know that the bikes are going to do this, that there's some some expectations of how we move through those. So I think some simple signage enhancement along with speed limit controls and then unpredictability. And it just sounds really weird when I put it out there, but I think those are also sort of key aspects. And then the third sort of piece that keeps coming to my mind is now when I drive either of my cars, it'll tell me what the speed limit is, right? And so having those speed limits brought down is going to make that on a lot of people's dashboards show that's lower speed limit. And then sometimes it turns red when you're speeding, you know, each car has their own different method. So I think that's another aspect to actually lowering the speed limits themselves is actually going to maybe reinforce people to go slower because it's kind of right there on their dashboard. I also think that that goes in with more signs because the cars have to know the signs to know what the speed limit is. So I think increasing signage, as your document said, will be highly effective as well. So those are some thoughts that I've had right now.
Great thoughts. Colleagues, you know, it occurred to me when we're talking, we can come back to maybe some of the nuts and bolts of speed limits, but since we're talking about speeding opportunity and traffic calming, I did have a couple of slides here that maybe I can just put up here for you can take a look because Put up here for you can take a look because this came straight from, let's see, where is it? If I can get play. Play from the start. No, I will play from current slide. Yes, and I will share it here. Show my screen. There we go, folks. I apologize, but this is good conversation. So it's about, you know, design and operations. Street design and operation, operational changes can reduce the number of opportunities drivers have to speed. Not there. What is it doing here? Stop, share. Let me try again. Share a screen. Share. On your end, okay. There we go. Thank you, Matt. Most street design techniques reduce speeding in one or a combination of three ways. And I love these little scribbles because it just works for me. That's the kind of drawing I would do, making speeding physically impossible, usually through raised elements. Producing motor vehicle lane width to increase discomfort at higher speeds. Interesting, there was something I read a while ago that said. On residential roads, as long as there's not an issue with sightlines, if the some of the bushes are. You know, the yards have bushes in the front of them, people tend to drive slower than if the things are way open and flat, the grassy lawns. It's just, yeah, and adding gateway treatments are arterial slow points that. Create visual cues to reduce speed. It's just kind of you're talking about being unexpected. And. This was something that Philip and I had talked about before, and I sent this out to you all, but I was really quite stunned at the numbers here. I mean, this one. When they painted in September, potentially dangerous clashes between pedestrians and drivers have decreased by fifty-six percent, one intersection. And again, I, you know, that may be very unique circumstances, but there's something there. This was pretty fun, a really complicated intersection. Kind of doesn't look that different from one oh four and thirty-fifth and. There. Five-way intersection Lancaster, Pennsylvania. And the rate of drivers yielding to pedestrians increased by ten percent after they put it in. So it's got to tell, it's certainly something to think about. And besides, you know, we've been talking more about culture and arts. Congressman Riddle has been reminding us about our commitment to the arts through our various capital programs. And this is another thing to consider. So let me stop there. And that's okay. And colleagues, other thoughts, Mr. Frattoni, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I have three disparate thoughts. One of them is that something you showed me, which was that Brookside has that very subtle curve in it. And I didn't realize that that hadn't been part of its original design, that it was straight as an arrow. And by introducing the curve and adding that element of unpredictability. It did slow down people. And I think we have some opportunities here because as we do the overlay program, I'm wondering if there's some opportunities to do that in some of the straight stretches that we're talking about. Second disparate thought, it's one of these aforementioned electric bicyclists that are terrorizing the city. The governors of those bicycles are set at twenty miles per hour, which is definitely above the fifteen mile per hour speed limit on those. And so I think when the legislation with the yields was. Adopted, I don't think that was even an issue at the time. But now the more people have these electric bikes, I'm seeing. That we may have to figure out some way to incorporate that technology into our regulations, simply because faster speeds are possible now. And then finally, then this is a kind of, to your point, are there any. Downsides or unforeseen consequences of adopting the NACTO city limits criteria? Has anybody made any coherent arguments against it?
No, and I very specifically have not. You know, it hasn't. Been examined by our contracted engineer or our legal team. I very deliberately wanted to make sure that we had this conversation to see which direction. Everybody was feeling like they wanted to go. But that's in terms of negativity from peers, I haven't heard anything. And I think it's fascinating if you look at the. The cross section of the people that created the document. It's from all over the country and, you know, and big cities to medium sized cities to small cities. And. And again, our assistant deputy director of transportation from Washington State was one of the editorial members of that group. So I think it's a pretty, right now it seems to be. I don't want to call it cutting edge because that implies real extreme science. I. I'm trying to think of this more of thinking about the soft side of the things, about the human. Part of the equation with heavy machinery. And figuring out how we can continue to make sure that that is front and center rather than. Under the bus, so to speak, which, yes, Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, yeah, thanks. I agree with most of what everyone's been saying so far. I really, really like the NACTO guidelines. I like the risk matrix approach to things. And something that jumped out at me is it incorporates the lack of sidewalks. That if a street doesn't have sidewalks, it's automatically considered a high conflict street. And that, according to their matrix, caps the speed at twenty-five. If it's low activity and if it's medium or high activity, it says twenty. And so I would support having a tiered approach with arterials, minor streets. And then on top of that overlay, well, if there's no sidewalks, or if it's high conflict in another way, then even if it's. If it's an arterial, it still drops to twenty. Two other things that come to mind that might be topics for another day, I think the data shows that most. Incidents occur at intersections, incidents involving pedestrians or bicyclists. And so we might look at ways for making intersections specifically more safe. Whether that means more stop signs, better timing crosswalks, you know, using best practices to make these intersections safer for people to get around. And the third thing, I had a chat with Chief Harden about what, you know, what he's seeing and what his officers are seeing. And some of his feedback was that a lot of it comes down to distracted driving, that that's where a lot of people are being ticketed and that creates an unsafe environment. And so I think there's room for education and enforcement about on distracted driving, cell phone use. When I think of campaigns, things like Click It or Ticket, you know, things that, you know, that sort of outreach that comes to mind, and. I think that can help because, yeah, cell phones are ubiquitous. But overall, I mean, I really liked the NACTO approach, and I would like the first part to adopt it or something very similar to it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Goldman. Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor French. I want to thank you for a wonderful presentation. I think this reinforces as a part of our discussion. I think with the great work you've done to put this together, I am fully supportive of looking at and reducing speed limits in Lake Forest Park. And I consider. Speed limit is just one element of how to make our city safer for pedestrians. Drivers and bicyclists, but I'm fully supportive of moving forward with the NACTO as a standard. To use as a guideline for establishing our safe. Speed limits in Lake Forest Park. If there are other guidelines out there, I'd welcome those, but I think NACTO. And the guidelines that you distributed, I think, would be sufficient and are well developed, given the case studies that other cities have used to support that sort of. Process for establishing safe. Speed limits in Lake Forest Park. I think, though, that going beyond speed limits, there are opportunities for us to. Look at how to improve safety for pedestrians, bicyclists and others through street engineering. Including looking at ways to calm traffic to make it safer. But as a first step, I am very supportive of moving forward with adopting NACTO as our. Guidelines for developing procedures to set safe speed limits in Lake Forest Park. And just want to acknowledge the terrific work you've done as Deputy Mayor French to bring this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. You're very kind. I just wanted to mention too, on the subject of five twenty-two, I was able to have a conversation. With our friends, or I should say friend, new mayor Herbig, last, I guess it's almost two weeks ago now, about various. Regional issues as well as. Local issues that affect both of our cities. And he brought up speed limits on five twenty-two. Unscripted and Kenmore is very concerned about the trends that they've been seeing in. Dangerous speeding, dangerous activity, people driving in the bat lanes, the high capacity lanes. And so the very, very positive news, it was an outstanding conversation. Is that we don't have to go that route alone, so to speak, pun intended. We can share some of the resources and the, because that will require. Going through considerable effort to request a lowering of the speed limit and figuring out what makes sense in terms of the. The actual speed and whether or not, personally, I'm very much leaning towards trying to, and I mentioned this to Mayor Herbig. Setting a lower speed limit between. The cores of the center of our communities, both Kenmore and Lake Forest Park. It indicated from my thought just off the cuff was somewhere around one sixty-fifth to just pass Ballenger Way. And then I suggested that maybe Kenmore, we consider it from sixty-first on down to around at least sixty-eight, if not farther, because they are. Working very hard to create a connection to the waterfront with their new waterfront park, which is opening up here in a few days. Not soft opening, by the way, it'll be formally opening in August. And additionally. They're going to be building a one hundred unit apartment building at their public worksite there on Boffa Way and. Mr. Herbig expressed his concern about making sure that people are safe up and down that corridor. So and that's going to be specifically for low income residents. Yes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wanted to just elaborate on that point. Seems to me that if you look at five twenty-two from I five. All the way running up through Kenmore, say, we have speed limits of thirty-five as the base where there isn't. A lot of commercial development, and then it drops down to thirty, where there are more apartments and commercial development on Lake City Way. I could see a similar pattern for Lake Forest Park and Kenmore so that there could be a speed limit perhaps of thirty-five to keep it consistent. With and predictable, but then a lowering of the speed limit around the sensitive areas, as you mentioned, Deputy Mayor. But I, and then the other place I hadn't thought of is one oh four where the speed limit is forty. Do we want to package that up as well? That's a little tougher because it is forty through for a longer stretch, you know, it isn't like Lake City Way where we have. Thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and then it jumps to forty as soon as you cross into Lake Forest Park. So. I just, I really would appreciate the partnership with Kenmore. And I think the idea of looking consistently from I five through Kenmore for some consistent approach would be a really good selling point. I join with all my colleagues in supporting the approach that you have presented, explained. And which my colleagues have endorsed as well. I think it's very timely. And makes a lot of sense. I'd like us to. Also focus on key intersections when we think about traffic calming. Because of pedestrian and bicycle safety. I'm not quite sure where to go with that, but I do think that that is going to be. You know, something that increasingly will be a sensitive topic and something our community will want to see.
Thank you. Yes, because we're real.
Thanks, Tom. Thinking about the comment about Brookside and how it. It weaves through its space and how successful that has been versus. I take Seventy-Sixth Avenue West off of one oh four going northbound, and they tried to do the same thing, but the road itself was still gigantic. It's just the striping that. And it doesn't really affect people's actual speed. So I think there's something about that physical constriction that triggers us, right? So I want to make sure that as we're looking at these speed limits, that we're also thinking about what is our budget overlay? To reduce pavement and squeeze roads physically in those areas where we want to encourage people to go slower. So I think there's a. That budget component to it that I want to make sure we're keeping in the back of our minds as we get moving through. Because simply changing the stripes, I don't think is actually going to get us the success that we want, just by giving those two examples that I drive through all the time. So.
If I could follow up with you, are you talking about that that street just past Lake Ballenger that goes up into. Linwood, basically, goes north, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Because they recently redesigned that so that it has curves in it due to these very wide bike lanes that they put in there. Are you fine? I don't drive it very often, but are you seeing that that slowed things down?
No, so they have parking on the right, then they switch to parking on the left, then parking on the right. So it kind of shifts the road. But there's one, no one parking there. So there's no real obstruction. So it is interesting. Just without that physical closeness to your lane, that I don't see anybody reducing their speeds significantly.
Thank you.
Just a couple of thoughts. One oh four is a real challenge. I mean. That's one is going to be a long. It's going to be a very long process. And I mentioned this before, but this speed limit was twenty-five for most of, from thirty-fifth all the way to five twenty-two. It was twenty twenty-five from thirty-fifth to five twenty-two up until, I think, early nineties, and then they changed it. When they moved the bus stop for Lake Forest Park Elementary around the corner onto thirty-seventh. I think it's a very confusing kind of set of sidewalks, and that's not. The city's fault because the city annexed a variety of different locations and there's, and multiple jurisdictions have had. Authority over that, as I understand it, various, you know, Washdod, of course, as well. And I think. My sense of it is, once the roundabout is put in at fortieth place. We're going to be, there's going to be a series of necessary slowdowns anyway. And I really think that as a community, we need to have a conversation about. What people would like to see on that, on that stretch of roadway, because as you indicated, Councilmember Riddle, I think. It is, it's strangely wide in some places. Sidewalks are kind of all over the place. You've got vine maples poking out in. Strange locations and, and I think that. And again, that's going to be a longer term thing. That's not going to be within our financial. It's going to, will be constrained for a while, and it's definitely going to take a partnership. With outside agencies to come up with the funding and the werewolf file to do that. But I do have hope too with the implementation of the Culvert project there by Washdod at thirty-fifth and. And that tangled intersection. And the roundabout going into being constructed in short order. I think there's some opportunities for us to kind of start establishing what the community expects. And trying to find those resources to make those things happen. And. That is one case where I don't believe a partnership, certainly having a partnership with Shoreline and Mount Lake Terrace makes sense to communicate what we're doing. But we're not in the same position as we are with Kenmore on five twenty-two. It's a very different situation. The top, the topography, when you hit shoreline, on up from the old Kellogg site, and that is completely different type of. Area, you have fewer driveways, you have fewer access points, and then it widens out considerably there. So. The good news is that on one oh four, the right of way is very wide, and there's an opportunity to. Work within that area without upsetting the trees and things like that potentially. Councilmember Goldman, you got a thought?
Yeah, on point with Route one oh four, for me, I mean, looking at the NACTO guidelines, for me, it actually seems kind of straightforward that despite it being a state highway. There's a general lack of sidewalks, there's a general lack of shoulders, there's a lot of driveways, there's a lot of cross streets. And for me, I mean, twenty-five would be an absolute maximum for one oh four for the entire stretch from the shoreline border to town center.
Thank you for that, Larry. You know, you beat me to it because I was going to suggest we go through a little exercise and do one of those, but you just did it for me. So. that and you probably did it better than I would. Thank you very much. Councilmember Cass over.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I just want to recommend to my colleagues, if you did not notice this in the um Washington Post article that um, Tom and and I shared, actually, yes.
Both started, I think, yeah.
Uh, well, no, no, I said it to you, then you said it on um that there is a link to an asphalt art guide that was published by Bloomberg Philanthropies um that I read, and it's very, very interesting, and I I would recommend um the rest of you to take a look at it because one of the as we talk about one oh four, I do believe that one of the opportunities that we may have is some street art, particularly around thirty fifth um where we have the five-way um uh intersection there and where we have a restaurant on one side, we have a school quite close, we have, you know, just the daycare, yeah, the daycare is right there. And so um and and it's very confusing if you're a pedestrian to figure out how you cross that intersection. So speed art that really directs people how to cross it and really alerts the traffic that this is a pedestrian crossing area, I think, is is, you know, real potentially a great idea there. But one of the things I really like about this um this guide that Bloomberg put out is it talks about the value of engaging with the community and engaging with nonprofit organizations, and we have them right here in our own city, um Shore Lake Arts, for example, to participate in designing and actually implementing the street art. So um, I just can see a lot of exciting opportunities there, and I hope that some, you know, the rest of you might read this and we could work together on it because they did talk about, he does, they they the they they have case studies in here, and one of the things they talk about is the fact that um that having elected officials and city staff who act as um, you know, cheerleaders for this kind of effort really makes a big difference. So so anyway, I I just really enjoyed reading it, and I I think it would be uh great if we could engage with some of our community organizations and and make this happen.
Uh, just, I think Councilmember Lebo is next, and I'll get to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like to propose that we um act to create an ordinance to adopt as part of a safe street or pardon me, as a safe speeds program that we adopt the NACTO guidelines with a proposed direction to the city staff to conduct a survey using the guidelines to recommend uh speed limits in Lake Forest Park within a timeframe of, say, three months. After adoption of the ordinance to to move forward with the NACTO guidelines and locate safe speeds in Lake Forest Park.
Thank you, Councilmember Lebo. Um, come back to that in just a second. Councilmember Frattoni.
Actually, I I am in favor of what uh Councilmember Lebo said, but uh the point that I wanted to ask Councilmember uh Cass over is that uh how do we operationalize that idea of bringing the community and um is it a is it adopting something like what uh Councilmember Riddle uh said about a one percent for art kind of deal, or is there some other way of doing that?
Um, yeah, it certainly takes budget, but but the exciting thing about reading the the handbook that I just explained to you is that sometimes that budget's quite small, depending on exactly what you're going to do. So if you get, if 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 you work with a with a community organization and design is done by community members for free, which it often is, then that's great. And that the materials, you know, you have to, you have to make decision about what materials you use based on the amount of traffic that a particular intersection might bear. And some of those materials are not expensive at all. It's just a few thousand dollars. So um that can be, you know, very cost effective. Um, other uh areas where there's heavier traffic, you use some of this pre-molded sort of plastic that, you know, you, I don't know how you adhere it to the street exactly, but you do, and it lasts a little bit longer. But but in all of the cases, it has to be refreshed every few years, but then again, that becomes another community effort that can be valuable in community building and and city pride. So.
That's real.
Yeah, I I think I see an amazing opportunity by Brookside Elementary where we already have that bubble that we're trying to squeeze that road, and it wasn't um respected for quite a while until the ballards kind of went in. And even then, some of those ballards kept getting knocked out as people. So I think this could be a really wonderful opportunity in engaging with the community in that location as like a test run to get us started and kind of work out the kinks. Um, so I'd be really excited to work with uh with group on that.
I'd like to speak in favor of Councilmember Lebo's proposal. I think that makes a lot of sense to uh develop an ordinance and ask staff for their assistance. Um, I I'm cautious on the timeline that Councilmember Lebo proposed, uh and I wonder if there could be some degree of staging of things we could work on. Uh, for example, a D the default, the idea of the default um speed limits, which don't necessarily require a a full-out study. Um, and so I I I want to get some feedback from staff on what could be done both for uh making it um manageable within our staffing and also uh possible staging or phasing of of what we could do so the council and the community could engage. I um I'd like to add to that, I think engaging the community, not just on art, but on the whole concept is is going to be important. Um, we haven't had that much um public participation in our meetings lately. And so um I I do want us to give some thought to how we do that. I don't know what the response has been to the stormwater uh participation effort. Uh, so uh whether we've gotten by doing that more people to be engaged and commenting, but how how do we um how do we make it real to the community? Sometimes the community doesn't really get involved till it looks like something's moving, you know? So uh and I I can appreciate that myself, having having been there. Um, so people are busy. Uh, so how do we, you know, how do we engage them? I I imagine we'll have a lot of community support, um and people will say, yes, and we'd also like to see the following things as well. So uh I think it could end up leading to other conversations about traffic calming and intersections and so forth, and so we should be prepared for that once we start engaging the community. So flagging those issues.
Yes.
Just to follow up, I think National Night Out is a great time to bring this because it's focused around safety, and we already have engagement trying to get to each of those groups. So I think something that we can preview at that stage, maybe not final, but here, these are the ideas, these are the options that are on the table with this uh kind of the NACTO guidelines and then uh and then be able to formulate something a little bit more definitive after that. So I think that'd be a very cool timeline to target.
Thank you both. Um, and I wanted to, uh, Councilmember Lebo, thank you for your your thought and initiative there. I wanted to um give everybody the opportunity to kind of talk about this and then have the administration weigh in about sort of next steps and being respectful about what again, we're a long ways from and I appreciate your comment about staging too, because I think there are some opportunities um that we can find ways so that we're not stepping on our toes relative to timing and and things like that. Uh, and and because clearly, five twenty two, one oh four are gonna, I think five twenty two will not take as long as one oh four will potentially. Um, the local roads, residential roads, I think that there's opportunity for speed, speed limit changes there that that is probably really the low hanging fruit after some adoption of the methodology. I do not know whether the methodology illustrated in here is something that could be directly ported over to to an ordinance or pointed at, and so have to defer to the administration and the legal team both on whether the pract- practiceability and practicality of that as well as where we are in terms of resources. And Mr. Mayor, did you want to uh? Okay.
Deputy Mayor, and um just to reiterate what Councilmember Bodie said, I think there would be concern of going too fast. Um, right now, being down a project manager and entering budget season. Um, you know, I did talk to the the city attorney, and I think if we look at the framework with the matrices, et cetera, I think that's kind of the direction she would like to see the city go to have some teeth behind why we're doing what we're doing instead of just kind of a blanket over the city. Um, but yeah, I think resources right now are are the the big difficulty. The other will be budget. Um, this is not something that we anticipated in this biennium. We did uh you'll remember back to when we put this biennium together, we did not budget for anything extraordinary. I mean, we budgeted as lean as we could, and anything is a change. It's going to be an addition. So I think once we get some, yeah, I think what we want to do is meet with legal counsel, kind of take what we've heard tonight using the matrices. I, you know, that kind of seems to be what I'm hearing of, you know, putting something in place, and then we would need to look at a consultant and what we would need to do to to bring on board what we would need in in that arena. Um, and I think that's talking to legal counsel as well. How much consultant help do we need behind this effort? And I don't have the answers for that tonight, but um those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you very much, Administrator Hill. Miss, oh, did you have a question?
Question for uh our city administrator. Sorry.
I am sorry. I have a question for our city administrator. Um, so for the vast majority of residential seat streets, I see that as a simpler process and and so that's when I think of staging, I think of the residential streets, the collector streets um as something, you know, maybe it isn't as that difficult or time consuming, and we don't need that much consultant assistance to do something in those locations. So that that would be my my thought, but I am ultra sensitive to our limited staffing resources and budget concerns.
I appreciate that clarification because I think that helps, you know, it's it's back to the low hanging fruit discussion, correct? As young those are easy, and the rest are going to require studies by state statute that we're going to have to complete.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Mr. Lebo.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, you've done a lot of research on this. Is it your opinion that we need to um adopt some guidelines or a procedure to even to look at residential streets?
Uh, yes, that is state statute requires it. Um, so it it doesn't have to, but again, it has to be the response I got from the MRSC was it really comes down to what your legal counsel says is defensible and and important. That is always top of mind when we're talking about something of this nature. So um.
But to follow up on that, we don't have to have a consultant to use the NACTO guidelines. We could do that with city staff in-house that describe these conditions as being representative, for example, of either our residential or um collector arterial streets. As as I understand, the city of Seattle and all these other cities did not, in fact, survey every mile of road for which they decided to establish a new speed limit. They developed uh using a procedure, a criteria, that if that road then fit that criteria, then it was deemed as having that speed limit. So if we designated, for example, by doing following these guidelines as an in-house process, you could come to an inclusion that the majority of our streets as designated as residential fall into this sort of speed limit as as a combination of density as well as um conflict when you look at the parameters that are established in the NACTO guidelines. I, you know, I think for example, you can spend a lot of money on a consultant doing a um State Environmental Protection Act environmental study, or I've done them also in-house doing modified environmental impact statements where we simply used a checklist, and I see this as more of a checklist rather than a data collection um with, you know, you're putting out on the street, collecting data of how many cars at what speed. I see this more of a sort of checklist kind of scenario. We don't have a lot of streets in Lake Forest Park, and we don't have, I mean, we basically have three kinds of streets. We have residential, we have arterial, and then we have um state highways. And it seems to me that we can establish the speed limits using these guidelines for all of those. It's just that in the case of our state highways, we need to request um state permission to approve our speed limits. So I would offer that we can establish them in terms of what we recommend and not necessarily having to wait for the state to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. I I understand uh and all all excellent points, I think, and I apologize uh because I really didn't want to get too far uh into the legal conversations um extraneous to this, so to speak, and be able to come to you and say, we are going to be able to do this like right, you know, next month, so to speak, to the to Councilmember Bodie's question of staging. I completely agree that in my mind, the it the residential area feels more like a check, sort of a checklist type of situation, as well as potentially the collectors, arterials starting to get in your, that's starting to get into a place that that uh at the same time, I really want to be respectful of the administration's concerns as well as our, make sure our legal team is my preference is not to go with a consultant on on the residential side if we don't have to. But again, I would defer to to staff and the administration if 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 there is concern that we need to make sure that we have our i's dotted and t's crossed here in this regard. But having said that, this is again where um from my part perspective, what I've brought to you tonight is one potential path. I think it's a po- a very positive one, and I hope it can save us some steps, and as I've indicated in the previous meeting, I don't believe we need to reinvent the wheel. Uh, and to your point, Mr. Lebo, sometimes going out for consultants is reinventing the wheel. So um, Mr. Hill, do you have any thoughts or Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, um, okay, a little bit of reality check. Um, Seattle's twenty five miles an hour, and Councilmember, you're right, when you get to one forty fifth, it says thirty, but by the time you get to uh the Toyota dealership at six thirty in the morning, it's fifty. It's fifty everywhere, all the way down to I five. Twenty fif- thirty fifth of my shop is, it's thirty five, forty, and that it's it's amazing. So here's my deal. I'm totally in for speed limits. You guys can put two miles an hour. I don't care. And you know what? All the mature adults will go with all the ideas you have of the traffic calming and everything else. The other fifty percent of the people who are young or have things going on who don't care aren't going to do a thing until they get treated like we did, Tom, when back in the day when you never sped in Lake Forest Park. When I grew up, you sped anywhere else but Lake Forest Park. It was that way. When you hit it, you just stopped. Lake Forest Park had a bad reputation. And eventually, we're going to have to start thinking about how we're going to stop people from acting bad. I know in our life, it'd be great if everybody, we said, oh, slow down. They're not gonna. We have really bad intersections that have low speed limits where we're having, you guys have probably seen the email we've got lately. And you know, you can't stop, you know, one Brookside, hey, that's, you know, we made all the whoop-de-whoops. That's a way, okay, that slowed them down, but boy, it's great for the guy in the ninja motorcycle. He just loves it. He's doing eighty down that all the time. It's, we really need, we need to be, you guys carry this off. I I want you guys to do whatever you want to do, but I'm going to really look into seeing how we can get more money so I can make people scared to drive in Lake Forest Park again. Because we need to have both ends of this. You can't tell them to slow down and not have them some, you know, and back in the day, when I was speeding around, I got tickets, and then my insurance went through the roof, and I had to pay for it. Right now, we don't have anybody, Seattle doesn't have any officers to pull you over. Everybody knows that. State Patrol doesn't do our roads, and so, you know, we really got kind of figured it out. And on the other side, we have a lot of walking area in the city, but most of it's overgrown. I need a public works department that's funded, and I need to find somebody, and we need to make it a priority to go around because, you know, there's a lot, a lot of walking. I get more letters and phone calls about I want to walk here, but I can't use our sidewalks because they're overgrown. And in our city, the problem is, we say, that's the property owner's problem. Well, obviously, it's not working for us, so we need to make it our problem. So and then we do have some trail options. It'd be really nice to get opened up for people. I'm just going after some low hanging fruit. It's going to take it. We don't, you know, we you don't have years and years to kind of get this because, to be honest, we are not near pandemic traffic again. We are just, we're way not caught up yet. And it's going to start coming. I want to figure out ways, and I will love work with the chief to see if we can find a way to get a couple more officers just once in a while to slow them down. It would be great if we had somebody on Burke Gorman Trail once in a while and say, hey, you know, this is ours. Or Gorman Trail too, but I want to work on that stuff that we can do now. Um, and that's important because I I Um, and that's important because I, I, you know, I was, I was asking the chief, we've had three people hit by cars in the last, what, five years? It's, yeah, and, um, one of them was the, on my second week in office and she got killed, a young, innocent mother walking along the road, which was a terrible tragedy. Nobody's fault. The girl wasn't doing anything wrong. The other two were people that were drunk and doing stuff out on 522 in the rain in the middle of the night and stuff, and we can't control that. So, you know, we need to work with that, but I, I love what you guys want to do. I think it's great, but I really think we do have to have a stick to back up with what we're doing. Because there's our people. I, I, I used to be like the people you want to get better, but now I'm one of you because I got older. I'm not supposed to use the word older, but I got more mature and it's not that fun to get in trouble anymore. And it's nice to be safe, but we need to figure out how to get, and that's where I would want on public input. When we have public input, we get the same 50 people and they're all our friends, but they're the same minded people we are. How do we get kids from the high school to want to come in and tell us what they think? Because I think we'd be all, whoa, really? And they, they don't think like we do. And, you know, and I have a son like that, you know, he's Mr. Racecar, but he got pulled over in my driveway in Lake Forest Park. He's not Mr. Racecar anymore. And he, uh, he learned, you know, you gotta pay for being an idiot. So hopefully we can get through this. Um, thank you, Councilmember Lebo. I am on the fact that, yeah, I would love to do a lot of this stuff, but we are a budget oriented city right now that needs the help, but whatever we can do, um, we need to, you guys need to make a path which you want to go to, and I'm going to try to do the low hanging stuff that we can afford to do and get something going on. Okay?
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I, I think, uh, I, I definitively agree with you on a two-pronged approach. It's, I, and, and it's not, um, let's say the timing here is not coincidental that we're going to the budget season, that we're talking about this now. Uh, I actually, I'm, I'm going to be imposing upon my colleagues here to continue this conversation as, as we go into budget season, uh, and through, through the summer and into the budget season because, um, yes, we definitely have to, to not only pay for this, but I, I fully support additional traffic enforcement and, and supporting the PD in other regards as well. So I, I think we have opportunities here. Yes.
So, um, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice, uh, Deputy Mayor, because, um, you know, we've got to work within the bounds of reality here. But one of the things that I really see we need, and it's something that you talked about earlier, is for the state to understand that we need additional assistance and we need to be able to use, um, speed cameras in places other than school zones. So I'd like to, you know, just put a, put a stake in the ground here to say that I'd like to add that to our legislative priorities for the coming session that we, um, you know, engage with our, uh, legislative, um, delegation on this issue and, uh, do what we can to talk to our fellow council members and other jurisdictions to see if they'll join us in really, um, advocating with the legislature for this. Because in this era of tight budgets, and we know it's not going to get any better because we know what the economy is looking like right now, we just need all the tools that are out there to help us with this. And I think, um, there's a good argument to be made that speed cameras uh, are a really valuable tool that have a lot of advantages even over the use of police officers to monitor speed. So I, I just would like to see us do that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cassover. And I apologize, Mr. Goldman, just a second on point. I didn't, didn't see you up there with your hand raised. On point, uh, I actually, um, that, there is actually a technology that's going to, kind of is mind blowing that uses artificial intelligence that detects distracted driving. And unfortunately, in our states, we can't, under the state statutes, can't even really use it as an assistance tool for the PD. Uh, it has to be pretty much specifically allowed. They're using it very successfully in, in several parts of the world and, um, that's another technology that I would like to see. I think distracted driving is, is, has gotten just completely out of control and, um, I mean, I'm sure the chief sees it day in, day out. And since the, um, the phone manufacturers and the cellular companies are reluctant to put technology into the phones, which they can do, that will, uh, that will indicate, will, can detect that somebody's distracted driving, um, that it, it's going to fall upon outside kinds of efforts. So I'd like to see lobbying also to be able to use that technology at least on a trial basis. So the PD can use it, set up a camera so that they can, you know, um, not have to have three officers down the road. They can have a camera and see it on their laptop and then pull someone over, uh, not even automate it. That could be down the line. I'd accept that. Mr. Goldman, you've been incredibly patient.
Um, thank you. Oh, that, that's fine. Um, two, two points. Um, I like low hanging fruit. It's tasty. Um, and so I, I'd like to get the staff's perspective. I know budgets and staffing are issues, but it seems to me that a citywide target of, say, setting a limit of 25 arterials, 20, um, lower residential streets, that and adopting the NACTO framework wouldn't require a consultant. And naively, it seems to me that that would not require an inordinate amount of staff time. So it seems that that could be something that we accomplish relatively quickly. And then a more data-driven approach of looking at specific zones, specific streets. Yes, that would be slower because that would require more effort. And on the subject of data, something that from the NACTO document that really jumped out at me was Seattle's case study. And on the topic of enforcement, I think, yeah, more enforcement would be great. But what Seattle found, when they dropped the speed limit from 30 to 25, no additional enforcement, no marketing, just changing the speed limit and the signs by itself was able to lower the speed, average speed or the 80, sorry, 85th percentile by three miles an hour. And it cut the number of crashes by, it looks like 30%. Obviously, with more enforcement, even better. But just lowering the speed limit by itself would still have a significant impact. So I'm, I'm all, all aboard for that.
I would just like to point out, I'm pretty sure those limits got changed when COVID started. That's why I'd like more data on what it really did when we get back to actual numbers of drivers because that program started in 2020, I believe, or 2019.
They started their test program in 2016.
Yeah, well, so.
Let's see. Okay.
So, and that's a, if they did a year before during that period.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. Good point. Thank you. Well, uh, colleagues, other thoughts on this? What I, uh, just, yes, Councilmember Ferratoni?
Yeah, while, while we're talking about data, um, you mentioned that the speed limit on 522 was dropped. I think it was what, five years ago, six years, 13? Okay. Did we ever see, um, a change in the number of crashes and/or in vehicle pedestrian, um, incidents?
I, I have 2017 to, to current with in front of me. Uh, what really changed for, with collisions was
Red light.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the biggest drop. We, we had a certain baseline of collisions that were happening. And then when tolling started, all of the traffic started in our direction. Our number never shut up quite a bit. Uh, but from 2017, yeah, our 72 collisions and then 129, 150, and then COVID dropped down to 89. So, okay. I have to get back to you on those numbers.
So what you're saying is it's actually kind of hard to tease them apart because there were two things going on at the same time. Understand that. Thanks.
I recall the volume went up, uh, by a minimum of 35%, the volume of cars as a result of tolling. So, and it's, it still seems pretty heavy to me.
It, it does, it does. And I, you know, hopefully we'll get some data here soon. The last numbers that I saw from, I think it was 522 from 145th to 104, pre-COVID was 42,000 cars. From 104 into Kenmore was 56,000 daily. And it was 24,000 or 26,000 daily down 104. And I don't know where, where the numbers have, you know, gone to now. I, I, what I've been surprised about too during this period of time, and particularly during COVID, and I don't know what it is, but it seems like, and maybe it's things that are happening on other state routes or, uh, you know, the interstate on, on 405 or whatever that are pushing people our direction to. Because it seems as though we're seeing a tremendous amount more of, um, all different types of vehicles than before. It used to be far more pass, you know, passenger stands and things like now. Now it seems like, not only you've heard me rail a bit against tractor trailers and, and heavy, heavy trucks that are coming through, but, but it's also machinery and things that are going kind of all over the place. Maybe it's because the region is growing so rapidly, but I also feel like there's some other reason. Um, and I, and I suspect it may be the tolling and a combination of factors, the tolling because it, uh, the sole proprietors that have a dump truck and a backhoe are charged per axle. So they're driving around. They're also avoiding some other areas as well. So I don't know exactly what the, what the, um, what the reasons are and smarter minds than mine will, will, will have to dig into that. So colleagues, my thought is this, um, I vice your cast over and I will have a conversation with the administration about the suggestions that you guys have indicated relative to sort of the low hanging fruit. We'll just call that for, for now. And, and, um, and with our legal team and see where, where we fall there, if that's acceptable to you, Mayor and, and, and City Minister Hill. And then, um, and then we'll move forward with trying to figure out that, that is going to, will, will really inform the other two, the, the, um, the arterials as well as the state routes. And I think that there is an opportunity there for us to uh, keep the ball rolling with communication with our neighbor, neighbors in Kenmore and, and, um, and, and because that is going to take a lot longer. And I really would like to see those changes personally well in advance of any kind of changes to 522 when, when the, the rapid transit starts ma- sort of manifesting itself or breaking ground. Because I think things are really gonna, uh, I, I'd like to have us sort of put a stake in the ground and establish our thoughts about that. So, yes.
Just one final thought that came to my mind. We had talked about earlier, something of, of pedestrian streets or, or, uh, safety streets that are more like local access only. Um, is that something that's addressed in this NACTO or is that a separate subject altogether?
That's a separate topic altogether. And thank you. Um, there was just not really enough time. This is a lot of material for everybody to absorb. And I know you all are going to have some great things to share and you have. So that is one that relative to sort of traffic calming ideas and some other things that we'll be talking about probably at the next, actually the next meeting. On that point, it reminded me of something you said about the, um, Vice Chair Castor about painting the, um, intersections. I was tracking my brain trying to figure out why 165th is such a challenge to reconcile that there's crosswalks there. It's because they're only on three sides and two of them you can't see when you're driving. You can only see one. I thought there was only one crosswalk there actually because unless you slow down, you, they're either so worn or they're, so that really, I'm only using that as an illustration that we really need to work on. I was having a conversation with one of your neighbors up the hill at a, at a Brookside event last week. And, and I was, why is it 165th such a challenge? Because it's a very small intersection too, which makes it even more dangerous, I think. But then I realized I walked over there and I'm walking around and I realized you cannot see the crosswalks and there's not one on the south side. So that makes it less of a defined pedestrian car happy, not happy, I dare say that, but interaction place. So I think it illustrates the point about what you were saying, Philip, that if we could do some things like that, there might be, you know, and, and those from a low hanging fruits standpoint of getting on wash dots, you know what about making sure they keep their crosswalks, uh, striped appropriately for safety.
Right. I think wider, um, brighter, more noticeable on all four sides makes a lot of sense. I also wanted to mention on the idea of, um, this isn't really a traffic safety issue, but the Parks Board, one of their initiatives is they do want to look at, um, particular, especially if neighbors are interested in weekend, uh, closures for biking and walking of, of selected streets. That's one of their items that they'd like to follow up on. And so, um, they've been good about putting, you know, volunteer time into, into their efforts. So, uh, but they would have to engage that community, right? Because you want to make sure that you have, uh, you know, critical mass of neighbors who are buying into it. But I just wanted to mention it again because it could have, you know, fallen off of people's radar, but that, uh, that is something that they're seriously interested in pursuing. Maybe while they wait for master planning for the waterfront part to occur.
Sure. Good point. Councilmember Riddle.
Um, continuing to think, these ideas are coming together. And I was thinking about, uh, Councilmember Ferratoni's idea of, um, reinforcing and I, the identity of neighborhoods. And I could see some of these sidewalk art, uh, the crosswalk art is being a great way to really engage with the community in these different neighborhoods and, and that they can develop their own sort of look and feel that they could support, and that would really be an engaging community activity as well. So.
I will take, uh, close with a quick anecdote. Does anybody have any other thoughts? I just want to, I'll close with a quick anecdote. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hill, Chief. Um, something you said, Lori, uh, reminded me of this and goodness, shame on me for not remembering this all the time. The reason why I met my better half is because of a closed off street where we were playing football. So, uh, right in front of the little startup that my buddies and I had started, uh, many, many years ago in the nineties. And yeah, that's how I met my wife.
Building, building community.
There you go. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, uh, I guess we are adjourned. Oh, citizen comments. Thank you. See, there you go. And, and Lori, to your point, thank you. Uh, do we have, I don't, do we have anybody? No one, no one in tenants? Okay. Uh, no one out in the foyer? Okay. Uh, thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.